Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time right now is seven P M. Going to ask that our clerk Wykoff, please call the roll. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, you can lead us in the pledge, or I can ask our short timer, Councilmember Davis, to lead us in the pledge.
That's fine. Councilmember Davis can lead us. That'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Davis, and thank you, Councilmember Gamble. The next item on the agenda is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any item that is subject to a public hearing. Those would be quasi judicial decisions. If you're interested in speaking this evening, please go ahead and hit star nine if you're on the phone, or raise your hand if you're in the Zoom meeting, and if you are here in person, I will go ahead and call your names. So we'll start off with the people who have signed up. First person that we have who signed up is Jennifer, and is it Carol? Please come on forward. And I'll ask you to state your name for the record and just association with the city or area of residence, and then we have a three-minute timer, so. Thank you. I would ask you to go ahead and get a business card from our Public Works Director, Jacob Roberts, right there. And he'll want you to send those pictures to him and coordinate with him, then. We can see how that is working out there and everything. Okay. Yep, thank you. So, again, if you're online, hit star nine. Otherwise, if you're in remote Zoom, please hit your raise hand feature. Councilmember Gamble, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I just, it was really hard to hear that comment. I see Daniel Kenny's shaking his head as well, so just wanted to record to reflect that. We might want to turn the input up on the on the mic there. I got the gist of it, but it was really difficult.
Okay, just a second. So we're going to take a pause and just practice with the microphone for a moment.
How's this one? Is that better?
Fantastic. Yes.
So for point of interest, we could hear it just fine, but it was on the speakers in the the partition is not down the middle of the room like it normally is, and I think that the mic we had there is keyed to the speakers on the back. So, thank you. All right. So if you're interested in speaking and you're here in the audience, if you haven't signed up and you'd like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be the consent agenda. I turn to council. Councilmember Kenny, you're reaching for your flag.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to accept the, to approve. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Scarborough. Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is new business, item six point one, approving a small annexation transition and waiver agreement with Waste Management Services of Washington Incorporated, establishing the contractual parameters governing solid waste collection services within Woodlands annexation area. And we turn to Megan Darrow. Thank you. I forgot about that. I could have saved myself some words there. All right. So that's been pulled from the agenda, and we'll come back to the council at a later date. Going to flip to the back, and we have council member reports. We'll start off online. Councilmember Gamble.
No report.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough.
Oh, we had a great evening at the lighting of the Christmas tree and good time was had by all. The parents it was attended. Probably better than it has been in fact, if you keep growing. And I'd have to figure out where people are going to park here. It was a great time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the tree lighting was fantastic. Great weather, great turnout. The tree lighting was fantastic. Great weather, great turnout, and so good to be with all of you celebrating the love and cheer.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kenny.
My mic's on. I don't think I can follow up or best the love and cheer part, but I'll try. I don't think anyone's mentioned our groundbreaking ceremony, or maybe we did last week. I don't think we have been together. Yeah, it was really, really wonderful and exciting to be a part of that, and really looking forward to seeing construction start on that and creating better space for our wonderful staff and community in the court, too. It's really well done, so I know a lot of planning went into that by city staff, and it was really, really wonderful. A lot of people were there outside of our group, so it was nice. Thanks for all of that. And, gosh, we had a really good turnout for our historic trivia night. I'm going to call out a few people from the city that were there, and we really enjoyed seeing them. Deborah was there. Lance Bailey was there. Chief Jolly and his beautiful wife Brenda were there, and we just had a great time. We had a big turnout. We raised a lot of money, and it was just really fun to see a lot of people come out to Route Two and celebrate Monroe history. It was a lot of fun. So thanks to everybody that supported us. And I think that was it. Don't think there's anything else. Oh, we have an open house at the Historical Society next Saturday, December ninth, from one to three. If you want to hear me come play a bunch of Christmas carols really badly on the upright piano, please come down. But we do this every year, and it's a lot of fun. It's just an open couple of hours to come in and have some cookies and coffee and take a look at our exhibits and meet some of our board. So please join us if you're free. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Fulter.
Repeat again, when was that open house?
December ninth, from one to three at the museum.
Okay, sounds wonderful. I also want to commend the staff for the groundbreaking. That was an awesome thing. I think it's historical. We are going to look back on that day of, you know, remember when we started the new city hall? It's pretty exciting. So thanks to Jordan, who is missing tonight, and everyone else.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, the groundbreaking was quite an event. And glad to be there. Also, the tree lighting, largest crowd I've seen. I had a couple of my kids who have been going to that forever, and they remember you know, standing out there with the smaller tree. So it was, it's evolved quite a bit. It's fun to see and glad to be a part of it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, councilmembers, and we're going to go to Staff and Department Reports now and start off with the Police Department, October twenty twenty-three, report with Chief Jolly. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Council. You have included in your packet the Monroe Police Department Monthly Report. It seems like these are almost occurring regularly on a monthly basis. You can see that we have some significant cases on the front page, some trends that you might want to read through and notice, a little concerning, but business is getting a little more active. And, you know, not to an alarming point, but yet we're seeing some significant trends, and you can read through there. The last item on the first page talks about a Narcan save, in which one of our officers was able to successfully administer a Narcan dosage, save somebody. This does happen regularly here in our community, and it's an unfortunate trend that we're seeing. But fortunately, we're trained in administering Narcan and have provided many life saves with that tool. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, we have some personnel updates. You'll see on the last page as we go through this. We have a couple of high-quality individuals that we've got from local agencies that are experienced officers, including Tom Kangi Wosie from Bellevue Police Department and Terrence Krug, who came to us from Auburn Police Department. So we're very happy, very fortunate that we have these young men joining our ranks. And that is it, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Chief Jolly? All right. Thank you very much. Next update we have is from the Finance Department, and we have Director Hassert online. Good evening, Director Hassert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. So the October finance report is in your packet. I won't be as brief tonight because there are a couple of things that I would like to highlight. First off, the investment report. For those of you that did go through and read it, you will notice that we did make three purchases this last month. We purchased at par value of over six point six seven five million. They range from five years in length to two years. Part of the reason that we went ahead and did that is we had the available cash to be able to do so. We wanted to take advantage of the higher returns that the market is bearing right now, especially on treasury bonds. Even though our local government investment pool is returning a little bit higher, because, for example, the five-year investment we purchased has a yield of around four point six three percent. When you take into the fact that we purchased it at a discount, the L G I P can change on a dime. Another example of that is last year through October, our total interest earned to date was just a little under three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. This year through October, our interest earned to date is just over one point four five million. And all of that is attributed to our interest earnings on our short-term investments in the L G I P. But it is extremely sensitive to what's going on in the markets with regards to what the Federal Reserve does. So if the Federal Reserve does start dropping interest rates as anticipated next year, locking in the four, almost five percent rates on these three new investments will help to bolster our long-term investment portfolio and continue to realize some decent interest earnings over the next few years. We'll also have an opportunity to purchase a couple more investments here during December. We have two investments that are maturing, that currently are only returning a little over one percent, so that, too, will help invest or increase our earnings for the long term with those. So we are keeping an eye on the markets, and we're trying to take advantage of that while we can. The other item that I wanted to bring to your attention in the in the finance report actually isn't so much about finance as it is about our branding program and effort. As you guys may be aware, I was out of the office for three weeks during October, and as the project lead, that did put a little bit of a hiatus on the momentum that we had on the branding project. It is now picked up again. During November, we have started looking at graphic designs associated with the all the information that was gathered, and if council remembers, we were in front of you talking about the three Ps that were identified with regards to the survey and the information with branding. And just as a reminder, the three Ps, personality, the city is friendly, supportive, natural, inviting, playful, and vibrant. Our position is where proximity and community converges, and our promise is that we are vibrant, living with meaningful experiences. J Ray is working on graphics to try and capture that, which will eventually lead to a logo. We are starting with vetting that with our brand leadership team as well as with the senior leadership team. And then, beginning in the next couple of weeks, we will be in front of our brand ambassadors to kind of vet them and see if they resonate, if they truly reflect our three Ps. And then, after which, we will bring that information in front of council, so you guys get kind of a first look at it all as we continue to hone all this down. So just wanted to let you know that the branding project is still well underway, and even though we won't meet the original timeframe, we're going to be pretty darn close. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Hassert. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Kenny.
Thank you, Director Hassert. I had one question in the memorandum to Mayor Thomas and Council dated November twenty-eighth. Under the bullet items, there is a hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars going to Graphic House, and it says gateway wayfinding signs, phase three change order. I was wondering if you could explain what that change order might be.
I actually can't. That was provided by the Public Works Department. That has to do with our wayfinding and gateway signs, and that is within the parameters of the purchasing policies. It's usually, and I think Director Roberts is in the audience, he may be able to expound on this a little bit more, but usually those types of change orders tend to be some close-out things usually with regards to location of wayfinding signs. It may have taken a little bit more effort to be able to install them. And so, because I believe that that project is wrapping up, and so these would have been the last of the bills.
Thank you, Director Hassert. Looks like Director Roberts is.
Is it on? Okay. How astute of you to notice, Councilmember Kenny. I do recall that change order. I do not recall the details of the change order. I will work to get those back to the council as a whole as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Hassert? All right. Go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda then, and that will be a report from our Community Development Director, Director Bailey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Community Development Report is in your packet. Couple highlights. Our project highlight this month was the Planet Fitness, which is open. It's, as their name implies, a fitness recreation, a fitness club. They were located right next to the coastal business location, and they did a fairly extensive amount of tenant improvements to go in there, so it was a multi-month process for permitting, but they are open now, and they're their franchise colors are purple, and if you drive by there, it's a very purple location. We did have a small uptick in issuance of single-family resident permit. I want to mention that we've gotten indication from a number of builders or development projects around town that there are, there are a number of projects are looking to get building permits submitted before the, before the new built building code takes effect in March. So we may have a pretty strong uptick between now and, and March. I expect to sort of see that start in the beginning of the year. That's all I've got, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? And what was that color again?
It's purple.
Go Huskies. Thank you.
I could say something, but I might offend someone.
That was for you, Jason. All right. Next item on the agenda is Human Resources and I T, November twenty twenty-three, report with Director Worthen.
Hello. Evening, everybody.
Evening.
Tonight, we're for the H R side. We still have a few positions open. C S O, Parks Admin Assistant, Assistant Public Works Development Service Manager. We have one police officer position that Chief is pretty close to filling in, I think. So anniversary list, a pretty big one. Sherry Hurst has been with us thirty years, so that's a long time. Sherry will be retiring at the end of the year, and we deeply miss her, but she will probably not miss us because she's going somewhere sunny. But so there's Chuck Fuller, who's been here twenty-three years, and other milestone would be Macy Haverly with seventeen years. So I T, we're actually having a lot more trouble tickets. I think that's because Jason made it easier for people to put in tickets. We used to have to go in through a process, and now we just pop in I T help at Monroeois, and we just get in. It's a lot easier to put in tickets. So I think Jason is tracking his data well, but it's easier to put in tickets, so people are putting in more instead of just stopping by bothering Ken and Jason. Communications, the last part, we had a lot of hits on our TBD video, four hundred and fifty views. Becky and Jacob both could win Academy Awards for their acting, Jacob specifically. Yeah, it was great. So I thought that was pretty good. Four hundred and fifty people. Four hundred were probably me showing everybody, but that's okay. And I think that's it. If there's any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Director Worthen? All right. Thank you very much. Our next update then is Mayor and Administrative Reports, and we'll start off with City Administrator Extended Agenda.
Since my microphone was taken for this purpose, I'll just enjoy. No, I'm good. I'm happy. I have to stand up at the podium. All right. Looking forward on the extended agenda for our meeting on December fifth. We do have a Public Safety Committee meeting planned, so the chief will be providing some crime statistics for the department, and then we'll have the Municipal Court Quarterly Update for the regular city council meeting. So normally that would be a study session, but we have made that into a study session and a business meeting because we only have two business meetings planned for the month of December. Under consent, we'll have our regular accounts payable meeting minutes, and then the inter-local agency agreement with Snohomish County for our, and that should not be embedded, but embedded, social worker. The, under new business, we'll have a resolution for our travel policies and non-travel policies. Those were presented to the Finance Committee several months ago, and we'll be coming forward to council then for final action. And then our regular reports from departments. Looking forward then to the twelfth of December, we will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. We'll be going over the legislative priorities and recommendations from the Economic Development Advisory Board and Community Human Services Advisory Board, and that'll be with Zach Humphries. Under the consent agenda then for the regular meeting, again, our regular accounts payable payroll meeting minutes, and then the twenty twenty-four fee resolution, and that resolution then for the travel policy and non-travel policy, if that hasn't been adopted at the previous meeting. And then our boards and commission appointments will also be happening on that meeting on the twelfth. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer those on the extended agenda.
Any questions on the extended agenda, Councilmember Kenny? All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the City Administrator Report proper, item nine point two.
Thank you. We are currently planning to have a fifth council meeting in January to go over a couple of things. We'll be doing the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six strategic plan, so starting our conversation with council around strategic planning for the next biennial budget, and then covering O P M A and P R A. That's the regular training. We may continue to add items to that agenda as we move through the month of December, so we wanted to make council aware of that extra meeting in January. And then, if anybody has made any determinations about which conferences they plan to attend during the upcoming year, please fill out your form and turn that back into Jody so we can get you scheduled for those conferences and arrange for the travel. And then finally, I want to just give kudos to all of the staff support that was provided for Congresswoman Del Bennie's visit, and I'll leave it up to the mayor to share with council kind of the outcome of that meeting and how well it went. But there were a lot of staff people working behind the scenes, obviously, to make that visit as smooth as possible for the Congresswoman. Got one more item. It's on the next slide, I believe. It's a little bit longer, so it needed a slide of its own. There we go. We have been notified that there is a third opioid settlement, and that the city is automatically included unless the council makes a determination that you would rather opt out of it. So I just wanted to make council aware of it. It's with McKinsey and Company, and the claim is that McKinsey played a central role in the opioid crisis by advising opioid manufacturers and other industry participants on how to sell as many prescriptions for opioids as possible. So municipalities are identified as being one of the class members. There are other class members as well, but municipalities are on that list. It's two hundred and seven million dollar settlement, and it'll be allocated among the class members using the same formula as the previous settlements. The fees and costs for that settlement won't exceed fifteen percent of the fund, and if class members want to be represented by their own lawyers, in this case, they may hire them at their own expense, but we have until January fifth of twenty twenty-four to do that opt-out. That's the reason why we're bringing it to you this evening to give an indication as to whether or not you just want to continue to be a class member and kind of wait to see what the outcomes are, or if there is a desire to opt out at this time.
Councilmembers, do you want to stay with the group, or do you want to opt out? Okay, I'm hearing people say and shake their heads on continue rather than opt out. Councilmember Gamble, did you have any, any different? Okay.
Excellent. That's all I have for council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Administrator Knight? All right. Thank you. All right. Mayor's report, few items. One, I had received an inquiry about Councilmember Alex Walker's swearing in. Staff and I are working with Councilmember-elect Walker right now to to do a swearing in sometime, I think between the twenty-first and thirty-first of December. So we will, if Councilmember-elect Walker would like us to, we'll notify council when that is to occur in the event that you'd like to be there. Again, this is something that you as an elected official can do, you know, on your own and or do it as part of a group, and so these can be private functions, or they can be public. So I just want to respect his wishes. I suspect that he's going to be fine with you being there, but I'm just sharing that. Other councilmembers, so Councilmember Fulture. Who else was up? Oh, and Councilmember Gamble. You have the ability to be sworn in at the last meeting of the year, if I remember that correctly, or within ten days of taking, starting service, and you'd start service January first. So it would either be a swearing in December twenty-one or twenty-two. That's what I thought. Okay. So December twenty-two through December thirty-first, I can swear you in. And so if you wanted to make arrangements through Clerk Wykoff, you can certainly do that. And we'll, we'll make time to get that done. Same thing with Councilmember-elect Walker. If you'd like this to be inviting the council members, let us know, because we're going to need to do a notice of potential quorum. If you all want to do it on the same day, that's an option, but don't feel obligated to. If you want to make this something with you and close family or just you by yourself, we can accommodate that. Okay? The next item then was, is Councilmember Davis. Usually I don't talk about the outgoing council member because we try to have a little bit of a surprise, but we'd had an inquiry as to when we were going to be recognizing your many years of service. Our plan to do that is on December twelfth, which is the last council meeting of the year. Would that be acceptable to you? Okay, we'll, we'll be prepared to rush you then. So anyway, so feel free to have family present, and we may have some other agenda items that evening. If for some reason you wanted to leave early to be with family, we will understand. That's one of the reasons why I'm encouraging people to do the swearing in, not at the first council meeting of the year, but before you take office, when I was sworn in as mayor, it was at, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think when I was sworn as mayor the first time, yeah, we did a public swearing in in the council meeting, and then my family, who came from all parts of the area, went off and had drinks and celebrated while I conducted a meeting. So where I'm going with that now, I'd had an original swearing in before then, but but the family showed up for the public swearing in. The problem with that is that just like with recognizing you, you may have family present, you may want to go party with them. So we want to respect that. Okay? All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
But if we don't want to party with them, is there any reason why we couldn't have one for during the normal, like we've done in the past?
You mean like have cupcakes and stuff?
Just do it on the meeting.
We are doing it on the meeting. What, what do you, you mean for, for the swearing in?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can do it at the meeting if you like.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So just make arrangements. Sorry, I was thinking about Ed still. So go ahead and let Clerk Wykoff know when you'd like to do the swearing in, whether on the public record or it's the first council meeting or, you know, in December, and we can, we can arrange that. uh, you know, in December, and we can, we can arrange that. Okay, all right, um, next item, uh, groundbreaker, and also Light Up Monroe, just, I, I think each one of you knows. Um, but we, we have a lot of staff involved in both of those, and um, you know, turning to staff directors, uh, please share our deep appreciation for all the work that everybody did to support both Light Up Monroe and also uh, the groundbreaking ceremony. We had a lot of people show up, and uh, there was a lot of work that went into that, and just from my heart to yours, thank you. Um, the other thing too is the Del Benet um, uh, visit also. Uh, just as uh, Administrator Knight had mentioned, there are a lot of people that went into making that successful, and again, thank you all for your role in, in making that happen, and please share that with your staff because a lot of the people that did a lot of work around these aren't here. Uh, the visit from uh, Congresswoman Del Benet was like a three-hour visit. Is that about right, Deborah? About three hours? Yeah, um, and she came and um, learned uh, information about our mobile mental health uh, work that we're doing here. Um, she went and uh, visited at Evergreen Health um, Recovery Center, did I get that right? Yep. And um, that is the recovery center that there was a uh, news story done on King Five uh, recently where um, you as councilmembers have approved uh, having grants for people who don't have any other way to get uh, healthcare to to go through drug treatment. And so um, she had come here to learn more about that, and um, so uh, we also talked uh, quite a bit about our federal legislative priorities. Uh, so we talked about the train crossings, silent train crossings. Um, we talked about uh, Highway Two, we talked about five twenty-two. Uh, we talked about mobile mental health, we talked about chemical dependency homelessness and so on and so forth. So these are a number of the different topics that we talked about. Um, and uh, we did thank her uh, for the four hundred and thirty-five thousand, did I remember that now? Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars that uh, she secured to do the mobile mental health program, so. Um, anyway, it was uh, really nice having three hours of her time and being able to catch up on a human level, but also to advocate for our community and, and have her see some of the great work that you all have invested in and that staff is, has been coming up with ideas on and uh, the great work that you're doing, so. Uh, thank you all very much for that. Um, are there any questions for me on those particular items? All right, thank you. But I have one more on my, oh, yes, thank you. I, I'm looking at the slide. Thank you. Um, all right, so Monroe this week, it's in your packets, uh, Community Transit Board Composition Review and Selection Meeting, okay, so. We need somebody to be selected by the council to attend a meeting on Thursday, January eighteenth at three P M. Um, it's an in-person only, no remote option. This is where you go and take part in selecting um, who the Community Transit Board representatives are gonna be. Um, it would be great if one of you would be willing to and able to attend that. It would be great if we could have at least somebody from the council serve in a backup position because when decisions are made on funding and things like that, if we're not at the table. What do they say? If, if we're not at the table, we're on the table? So we don't want to lose the services that we have, right? So. I would acknowledge there's a councilmember elect who's not here, you could certainly pick on somebody who's not here. Um, but I would love to see a volunteer, Councilmember Fulter.
I've been to a few of those meetings over the years, so I would be happy to go to that.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody object? All right, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Fulter for volunteering. And anything else? You got everything, right? Okay, the lights are going off in the back. Okay. All right, um, that's all I had. Any questions for me? All right, we're gonna move on to the next item on agenda, this is item number ten, Discussion Items Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Forty Four Comprehensive Plan Draft Land Use Scenarios Introduction with Kate Turtolo. Good evening.
So we have been coming to you uh, throughout the year, talking about the comprehensive plan. Again, we are required to adopt a new plan by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And one of the biggest pieces is figuring out how to accommodate our population, housing and job allocations for twenty forty-four. So most of this information uh, is summarized in your agenda bill, and I just want to take your attention to this page, two ninety-one of three eighty-three. It lays out um, our planning area is primarily the city of Monroe, but we also have areas that are unincorporated. Snohomish County and adding the two together, that is the total planning area that we're looking at. Uh, the unincorporated areas are potential annexation areas, so we need to keep that in mind. At the bottom of that page, it shows the difference of what we have today and where we're going, which is really important because Alex Dupie will be giving you a presentation on the land use scenarios that we are considering to get us to our population and housing and employment numbers. Um, the, and then on the next page of the agenda bill, two ninety-two. Just to get a reminder, one of the big changes for the Growth Management Act is we actually need to come up with housing by income um, by income range, and so we are looking at middle housing as well. So with that, Alex is gonna run you through the land use scenario planning. This will be used to do uh, a, a review or of alternatives in our environmental review. And then it will also be used as part of, you will eventually pick a preferred alternative as we move forward to adopt an actual comprehensive plan. So with that, I'm turning it over to Alex.
Thank you, Kate, thank you for having me in uh, this evening. Once again, my name's Alex Dupie, I'm a principal and also a project manager for this project. I'm with a firm called M I G. Uh, we are a land use, public engagement and urban design firm uh, charged with working with you and the community to look at uh, the next round of the comprehensive plan for Monroe over the next twenty years. Um, so if you can help me click through slides, great. So we're gonna talk tonight, um, and some of these slides, you've already seen some of this is new. Uh, we'll talk about the growth targets, uh, just to confirm as Kate mentioned. Um, we'll also uh, review again the buildable lands inventory, which is the foundation of the capacity assessment and, and uh, development potential within the city. We'll talk a little bit about community engagement and how that informed what the scenarios are in front of you this evening. And then we'll talk also about some of the input from the Community Advisory Committee, which um, some members of, of the council and Planning Commission are sitting on in addition to the community members. Um, ultimately to get a recommendation from you, hopefully to be able to move forward into the analysis. Um, it's important from a
Just go ahead and finish up the slide, and then I'm gonna call on Councilmember Scarborough.
Okay, yeah. It's, it's important for us to continue to move this process forward. We do have um, a scheduled deadline from this date, uh, December of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we're at an important inflection point within the project now where we need to get into the environmental analysis on the environmental impact statement. Because there's a lot of other elements that are tied to that, um, that we need to move forward as well, including capital facilities, transportation. Um, as well as, you know, more community engagement to talk about some of the trade-offs that we'll be talking about in the next year.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Yeah, we had the, in our last meeting, we had a couple of realtors and other people on item number two, when it said buildable land inventory, um, there were some questions about the I don't know how, kind, what we're getting as to what has actually been developed. She, she stated that there were a lot of places that said this land was available that's already been built on. And then because she has an invested interest in a big piece of land that she wants put in there, so I, I don't know what her you know, what her backstory is, if you will, but I, will your discussion about buildable land and inventory have any, is it updated from when we talked last?
Well, it's been updated, it's, it's updated to the most current um, permit information that the city has, so. The buildable lands inventory was completed about twenty nineteen, twenty twenty in that area. You've obviously had development since then, so one of our first tasks that we had was to take the buildable lands inventory that Snohomish County did for you. Update that with the existing developments that occurred since the buildable lands inventory was agreed upon. And actually, you get to count that development as part of your, your allocation, so we've taken both the housing and employment since um, buildable lands inventory was, was agreed upon between you and the county. Updated that, and now we have that, that um, those numbers that we'll be talking about in just a moment of needed housing and employment.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the next slide? Okay.
All right, so um, before I jump into it, um, we do have requested action this evening. Um, the first is to uh, approve the proposed land use scenarios that I'll be talking about in just a moment for analysis and the supplemental environmental impact statement. Um, this is essentially a no action and an action alternative. Um, the scenarios that I shall show in just a moment. Uh, we will use those to develop an action alternative that will be evaluated through a supplemental environmental impact statement. Um, I want to stress that this does not constitute a future planned use map. Um, that will be developed through future engagement in the spring and summer with the community, as well as input from Planning Commission and you and the Community Advisory Committee. Um, the FEIS, which comes later in the summer, that's where we're really starting to talk about what that draft future land use map is. So what's in front of you tonight is what we hope is agreement from you that it's okay to move forward with the analysis of no build or no action and action alternatives. Um, doesn't, doesn't set us on any path, it just allows us to do some more analysis. Um, the second motion is the move to authorize the Community Development Department, uh, Department, along with the consultant team, which is us to prepare and facilitate public outreach events. Um, both consultant and city have done a lot of engagement, both in-person and online to get us to this point tonight. Um, we'll be needing to do more to talk about trade-offs and eventually policy that we'll be bringing back to you, uh, you know, as the develop, as the comprehensive plan um, is developed. So that's our, our request of you this evening is to hopefully allow us to be able to move forward to uh, meet our schedule with Department of Commerce for end of December twenty twenty-four. I'll keep saying that. I'll keep saying that, babe. All right, so just to kind of talk about what we need to accommodate within the urban growth area. Um, by twenty forty-four, we need to accommodate about twenty-one hundred housing units and about twenty-four hundred jobs. The buildable lands inventory, um, that was completed and that we've updated shows that you can essentially accommodate those housing units with your available land supply within the city limits and the urban growth area. The challenge is really those jobs, and so that has been something we've been working with uh, with community and Community Advisory Committee and, and others to figure out ways to be able to bring more jobs within, within the city. But that's what we're shooting for, so those are the numbers that we were targeting for this process. All right, so let's talk about current land uses in Monroe. So as Kate mentioned, we have both city limits and outside city limits, but inside the urban growth area. So the area in gray, that's within your city limits. That's where you have land use jurisdiction over um, permits, planning, development within that area. That accommodates your, essentially your existing zoning map that you have. You also have areas outside of city limits with, but are within the urban growth area. Those are areas that over time you would likely annex um, for development. It can be a variety of different development types. The challenge, I think, with between city limits and urban growth area within the city is that you already have a lot of development within the county, within your urban growth area. So just because it's not within city limits, doesn't mean that it's vacant. So that's part of our, that was part of our set of, of um, project work that we did. Was to look at really what that capacity is, both within city limits, but then more broadly within the urban growth area. Next slide, please. And just to, you know, refresh, this is what's within your existing comprehensive plan. This is your future land use map that you know, essentially directs how zoning is applied um, on the ground, so. With a comprehensive plan and a future land use map, that's really your vision. That's where you want to go. Zoning is what you can do today. So when we think about the comprehensive plan, it's both informative in what that vision is, but it will look to how we start to modify the development code as a part of the implementation uh, need for, you know, comprehensive plan after it's adopted. So you know, it's a mix of housing, it's commercial, it's mixed use. You have, you know, your unique city in that you have a prison uh, right within your city limits, so you have a big gray box, you know, essentially at the bottom of your, of your city. But you know, fairly typical mix, mix of uses for a community of Monroe's size. Next slide, please. So when we look at both existing and future land use, one of the things we like to consider, and we've shown different versions of these maps. Um, but we like to look at, you know, how is the city developed today? And so I'm gonna step through a number of these pretty quickly, just to show, you know, scale and density of where development has occurred. And you know, it really exists within the city, and so this one looks at existing population density. So the darker the blue, the more dense the number of people per, per acre there is, and we've broken this up into a series of hex bins. So a hex bin is a nice way to essentially kind of neutralize the challenges of, you know, thinking about a parcel, like if a parcel's five acres, but it doesn't have much on it. The density will be very different than if it, it's, it's a parcel, you know, where it's a half an acre with a lot of stuff on it. So this is a way to kind of look at things equally. So you can see kind of in the southeastern part of the city, near downtown, you have more density. You actually have a fair bit of density on the, on the western part of, of town. But really, you know, that main swath, you can see where there's really no development from a residential standpoint, because there's no, you know, no people living there. So we'll just step through these quickly and uh, kind of show you just uh, some tidbits of uh, how development um, is identified within the city. So population density, this is residential development. So these are areas where the darker are ones that you actually have larger lots. So you see the further north you get, you actually have very large lots compared to where you're in the uh, other parts of the area where you have more density um, and smaller lots in your, in your development. So again, you know, that's not, you know. That's kind of standard for detached, single-family development, but you know, little, little pieces of darker colors where there is more density. But a lot of it's kind of, you know, lower, lower density development. Next slide. Um, these are areas where you have uh, smaller lot development, so again, smaller than that fifty-five hundred square feet. Um, less than those larger parcels, little pockets of development. A lot of these look like they were subdivision developments. Also, some of the areas of older parts of town, they either have been subdivided or smaller lots that that's just how they were developed, you know, fifty or seventy-five years ago. But definitely in the newer parts of town, those are likely subdivisions that were, were constructed on smaller lots. Next slide, please. Um, low-density attached housing units, these are townhomes, row houses, other types of units that are, you know, are a different type of mix. And as we start to get through this, you can see that there are fewer colors on the map, so you know. You all know this, but the city of Monroe is really dominated by detached residential. Um, and so you have little pockets of, you know, townhome or row house or duplexes, but really not that much. Um, it's really pretty much detached, single. Next slide. And then when you get to, you know, higher density units like two or four-story dwelling units, that could be a house that has four apartments in it. It could be an apartment building, really very limited and only, you know, it just, you know, certain locations within the city. Oh, sorry, looks, it's kind of the same thing. More uh, you know, five or more, as again, same kind of pattern, south of, of US two. Um, you know, in some areas, but it's really, these dots are really probably single developments that are starting to pop up. All right, so when we get to employment, um, you'll start to see those areas that didn't have any color on, on housing or population. Not surprisingly, those are where your employment clusters are. And I found this one really interesting because downtown definitely pops up as a high employment area. And it's, it's downtown, but it's also slightly surrounding area. But they're relatively low-density jobs, so it's, you know, smaller businesses, you know, with, with a few employees. When you get into areas like the industrial area, there's, it's larger development, so you have a higher number of employees, so that's why you see slightly darker marks. Some of these spaces, those really light blue dots kind of in those residential areas, those are likely home occupations. So, you know, it's not a business per se that it has a storefront, it's, you know, somebody's doing accounting or something like that. But yeah, again, it's very interesting kind of how it spaces out. US two and along Main Street, definitely your, your clusters where you see most employment. All right, so when we start to think about the existing development pattern that we just stepped through, and then we look at buildable lands. This is an outcome of the Snohomish County work with our added-on uh, developments on top of that. So everything that's happened since the, the buildable lands inventory was completed, we've added um, development since then. This map shows your vacant, partially-used and redevelopable parcels. And when you look at what's on the map, there's very little green. Green is your vacant parcels. So you're really starting to look at like, you know, what are larger parcels that, you know, maybe have a small structure on them that might be potentially redevelopable or partially, partially used. If they're redevelopable, that often means that the structure itself is actually worth less. If they're redevelopable, that often means that the structure itself is actually worth less than the land on it. It doesn't mean that it will redevelop per se, but it's just an indicator that, that modelers use to identify where potential areas are for redevelopment. So again, it's not looking at these areas as that they will develop, but it is potential opportunity areas that somebody could see potentially is coming in to redevelop over time. But I do want to stress, there's very little green on that map. So we're looking mainly at, you know, redevelopment or, you know, kind of zoning in some areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, clarify again where we're getting the redevelopable definition from?
Uh, redevelopable, that's, that's a fairly standard definition that most counties use for their buildable lands inventory. I'd have to look at what Snohomish County says specifically. Typically, it's a one to one ratio. So if your, how your structure value is equal to or less than the value of the land, then it's often considered redevelopable. Some counties break it down further, but I believe Snohomish County, that's their, that's their general methodology for that. And that's pretty standard for, for how we look at these types of things.
Anything for other council member gamble? Other questions from council members before we continue? Go ahead.
All right. Um, next slide. So, you know, an added layer to the picture is, you know, this, this looks fine, there's a lot of vacant and potentially redevelopable land within the city. When you start to add critical layers or critical areas over top of that, the story changes quite a bit. Critical areas are wetlands, steep slopes, flood plains are not critical areas necessarily, but they are challenged and also have additional regulations for development. So if you, you know, look at this map and you start to see all of those colors getting a little darker because we have a layer on top of that. Even if it's vacant or redevelopable, if it has critical areas on it, it's going to be very challenging to develop at a, at a, an urban scale. So it's, it's an additional consideration that we have when we start to look at this. And, you know, as a city, you have a lot of critical areas within these areas, within, within the city limits and the UGA. So that's another factor we've looked at in terms of capacity. So we've included that. So we developed this, we presented this, you know, actually last spring was our first community kickoff, I believe in April. Over the summer and through April and into the summer, we did an online survey. We had internal work sessions within, you know, kind of city staff to come around and look at what that input was and how we might start to define some of these options. And then city staff were out at a number of events throughout the summer, talking about essentially the same things that we're talking about now. What is the future for Monroe? How do we place growth? What does that look like? Where are the specific locations that we should consider or avoid? You know, that's also an important thing to consider. So when we start to get into the scenarios, all of that input is, is a key element of, of what we're just going to show in this.
Councilmember Gamble?
Yeah, sorry, can we go back one? There we go. And then on, on the partially used, can you give me that definition again?
Sure, so partially used is typically if you have a large lot with a small structure on a corner or on an edge, so that there is potentially development around that space. It's different than redevelopment where the building and land values are a little bit more in flux. It's often a large site that has a very small structure on it. And so that's a way that, you know, you could say, could you build around that? And that's actually a question that planning commission and the community advisory committee had was for Main Street, for example, we have large parcels with, with historic structures or very old structures. You know, are there opportunities to actually build around some of those by preserving that structure? So that's what that means by partially used is that it's, there might be other ways to, might be ways to add stuff onto that parcel, whether that's employment or housing.
So even, you, you would, it would take a rezoning though, right? So just looking at some of that, because I've, I've been looking at your, some of the areas that you have labeled as partially used. And some of it is resident, is a residential home that's marked as partially used. So I was just curious on how it has that label.
So partially used is actually from Snohomish County. So it's, it looked at the size of the parcel and what's, what's on the parcel. And then it also looked at the future land use. So that's, that's actually their determination of what's partially used. We use that information just to identify, you know, if you had to meet your targets, this is how we might use that land. So potentially, depending on where you're at and what that eventual future land use map is, you could look at, you know, altering the future land use map to change that designation. You could change zoning if it requires that, if you change the future land use map designation. We're not really at that stage yet. It's more of a series of what ifs for different types of land uses. Ultimately, your future land use map is where you'll, you'll get into those conversations.
Anything further, Councilmember Gamble?
No, I just, yeah, I'm just trying to understand it. The, just the data, because there's some of the, I think you hit it, I mean, those partially unused that labeled in different areas of residential that are original homes that the. Uh, the developments were built around, but the designation hasn't changed. So there's really nothing that those landowners can do because they're in a, uh, that's why I asked the question.
That's correct. And so you could, some of those parcels, like to get in, probably into the weeds a little bit. If you have a very large parcel, that would be considered partially used, but your zoning actually say allows for small lot development. Theoretically, you could subdivide that, that lot still be within the existing zoning, but allow more, more housing on top, you know, on that parcel. So that's, that's, that's kind of why we identify that slightly differently than redevelopable.
Councilmember Gamble, anything further?
Oh, good, thanks.
Councilmember Scarborough, you had your flag up?
His question.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Alex, go ahead.
So just going to show a few slides of some of the engagement outputs, and I'll step through these quickly. But I, I do, you know, think about these as I'm stepping through because the engagement that we did both online and in person really led to the scenarios we'll show. Let me grab the next slide. So when we did the community kickoff, for, for people who were there, we actually had, you know, different tags that we had on maps to show, you know, different types of land uses at different scales. And this is a summation essentially of all of those tables that we did. And that also included input through the schools, you know, really showing clustering. You know, people are interested in, in a mix of uses. We heard over and over walkable spaces, walkable neighborhoods, but also services nearby. So, you know, it's a data point that we started to use, but also very similar information that we gathered through the online survey. Next slide please. And then the online survey repeated that similar exercise. We had not quite five hundred responses. We actually had a number of more, uh, incomplete responses and those incompletes actually bumped that four, four eighty quite a bit higher. Because every time somebody puts a pin on a map or answers a question, it's automatically brought into the system. So even if you don't get through all the demographics and hit submit, we still ca, we still captured all of that information. And so we gather demographics, where should we place new homes and jobs? We also gather destination information for the transportation study. All of those elements became part of the scenarios and will actually inform some of the transportation, transport group we're doing. Next slide please. All right, so with that, oh, good. Next slide. So with that, so breaking this down just a bit, so. The state environmental laws require as a part of an environmental impact statement that you also look at a no action alternative. So every time you do an EIS, whether it's a program level EIS like us, where we're looking at policy and big changes, or a project level EIS where you're looking at a development. They always require a no action alternative. So our no action alternative, which is very typical, assumes land uses as they are today. We're assuming that's the comprehensive plan doesn't change. We're assuming the zoning doesn't change. We're not assuming any new policies come into play because they haven't been adopted yet. We're basically assuming what's on the books. And so with that. Both the buildable lands inventory that the, the county completed, as well as our analysis shows that that generally meets housing targets, does not meet employment targets. So our action alternative is looking at two different scenarios. So we looked at, or we're looking at a center focused growth scenario, which really focuses on that inner core downtown and areas near Fred Meyer and Safeway. Kind of that core to make that more of a walkable and diverse type of development pattern. We also are looking at what's called center growth and neighborhood nodes. So still focusing in the center, but also pushing nodes into, into certain parts of the community to address the desire from many community members to have more walkable places to be. So we believe, and the analysis is showing that both of these will meet or exceed housing targets as well as employment targets. When we get into the SEPA analysis, which is State Environmental Policy Act, we'll likely combine these scenarios into a single action alternative. Mainly because you just have to identify and evaluate the worst case scenario. So we've shown a couple of different ways you can do it. When we get into the EIS, we'll probably just do one alternative with the highest growth potential. When we come back and we look at the future land use map, you'll be able to pick and choose and make those changes for what you, what you want to see. But it helps us kind of think about different ways to, to grow. So with that, next slide. So the land use scenarios, so again, just to remind you on the targets, we need about twenty one hundred housing units within the urban growth, urban growth area. We need about twenty four hundred jobs within the urban growth area. And scenario one, which is that center focused growth, and then really focusing on downtown and the central core, does meet housing. It's very close on jobs. We're about seventy seven jobs short, and that's really because the county assumes that there's going to be about seventy seven jobs outside city limits in the UGA. The way we painted the land use, we didn't assume housing, or excuse me, didn't assume jobs out there. And so that number, that's an easy number to address. It's really just kind of what county assumed versus what we did with this scenario. Scenario two, it's about the same number of housing units aligned or allocated slightly differently. It does provide more jobs to meet, meet the demand. So instead of about twenty three hundred jobs under scenario one, we're actually pushing that up to about twenty eight hundred jobs. And the really, the big difference in that is how we've allocated mixed use. And we're looking at a lot more mixed use as opposed to just, you know, strictly multifamily. We're also looking at some of those nodes in other parts of the city that are designed exclusively for residential. And we were like testing options where that could be community, commercial, community serving, commercial, lower scale mixed use to, you know, address that desire to have some of those spaces outside of just downtown.
Before I call on Councilmember Scarborough, so with the, with sort of the change in how people are working these days, if somebody's working at home for their job. And their headquarters is in Seattle, where is, where does that job count in Monroe?
If it does not count in Monroe, and that is a, that is a challenge, not just with Snohomish County and how they do their modeling. That is, that is a question and a conversation that pretty much every city is having right now, post, post COVID. The jobs allocations only count those traditional kind of office, commercial, retail, industrial types of jobs. They don't count those jobs where you might be working at your kitchen table three days a week and you're commuting to Everett those other two days. That is, um. That is something, that's a challenge, but that's also not unique to, to Monroe and how we've had to address that.
So just out of curiosity, why do we plan for jobs? Is it to make certain that there are people here working in our community? Or is it something else? Because if there, if the idea is that we want to try to encourage people to work in our community rather than drive to, I don't know, Seattle every day. Then aren't we accommodating that by having people work here rather than in Seattle?
So I think there's two responses to that. So the first is if you, if your home office isn't, or your office is in Seattle, but you're working here, you still may support.
I'm going to interrupt. I actually asked this question because the, the distinction actually comes from Snohomish County. And what they explained to us because COVID really changed how people were working. People went home and a lot of industry started happening in people's garages and basements. And what was explained to me is that you cannot forecast home occupations, but you get credit for them. So in the next time that we go through a tenure update, or if there's something in the interim, we will get credit for all those new jobs in the city. It's just, we cannot assume that there's going to be growth in home occupations on the front end. And part of that reason, this actually came up last night at the planning commission, so great question. Part of the problem is this is a new trend, and so there's really no way to collect the data to say, the city of Monroe saw this exponential growth in these brand new cottage industries occurring in its community. This is a significant change in how jobs are created historically. My hope is that at the Pugil Sound Regional Council, as well as Snohomish County tomorrow, this conversation continues to happen. So we can actually start doing some forecasting. So it's, it's a really weird situation where you get credit for the jobs, but you cannot forecast them. And that's where we're, exactly, we still have to meet the allocation, but there's not a method today to forecast.
When, when they talk about jobs, are they talking about a particular kind of job?
No.
Okay, so when they're talking about jobs, they're just talking about people working?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not saying that we need to have more industrial to support, uh, family wage jobs, the manufacturing or something like that. It's just, they want us to have places for jobs.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scarborough?
When you said mixed use, are you talking about apartments above stores?
So there's, we actually assumed two different types of mixed use. We assumed kind of that traditional mixed use, which is, you know, retail with residential on top. There's also a commercial mixed use, which is, you know, office or, you know, flex space above retail. So the common element is that it has an active ground floor. What happens above that is varied by, by location.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Thanks for that, tripping me up on that tough question.
That kind of makes me wonder if cities like Seattle, how if I, if my main job is in Seattle, but I'm working here, if they, if that somehow negatively impacts them, or if they get to double, you know, count for something. And so what's going into my head here is that, is the whole thing about applying for grants and stuff like that. If we actually have more people working here than what's showing on the books, because we can't count people working remotely three to five days a week. Then when it comes time to get grants for ma, mass transit, or, you know, whatever the case is, are, are we missing out on something? But another jurisdiction can take advantage of saying, well, we have people working here, but the reality is that eighty percent of the people that work for that company are actually remote. So I'm just, I don't, I don't know how things work like that when it comes to grants, when it comes to planning, also the decisions you're making. If we're creating holes in our community for, you know, for jobs that won't be there, but the jobs are already there because there are people working at home. What is the opportunity cost? So what else could be going in that space that isn't going there like housing or something? So I just think about those policy choices and how that math can get in the way of opportunities for us.
That's all. That's a great question.
Thank you, go ahead.
So I'll step through a couple of maps just to show how this, how the scenarios play out on the ground. So the, remember the, again, the first one is scenario focus, or excuse me, center focused growth. And this really focuses on the central core, focuses on downtown, along Main Street, and also along, you know, that, that kind of traditional auto oriented commercial area. And that was an area that, that to be honest, kind of surprised me from the community input, both in person, online, that many, many people place dots as wanting something else there. Not to remove what's there, but to have different types of uses in addition to those services. And so we really, you know, took that to heart and thought about, you know, there is some vacant land in those areas. There are, there are parking lots, there are a number of elements where you could potentially do some type of mixed use product within, within those locations. With that would come pedestrian improvements, transportation, other elements that, that we would look at at a future date. But we really focused on that central core, both in downtown and where that your, your commercial area is. Some of the other locations, and you can see, you know, there's still a lot of yellow on the map, that's all detached residential. But we would be looking at particularly for those areas that were identified as either vacant or redevelopable or partially used. Areas that are not within critical areas actually allowing a little bit more scale there, whether that's middle housing. Or, you know, density that still is detached, but might have some different types of products. So it could be small lot residential, could be other types of middle housing products like duplex, you know, townhomes, those elements. So we assumed a certain percentage of those types of uses in there. Uh, Main Street was also one that I wanted to point out, both planning commission and the community advisory committee discussed. There are a lot of great older residential structures there on large lots. The concern is that, and it's actually zoned for mixed use now, but the concern is that, you know, if the market really heats up, do those places actually get torn down? And you just have big apartment buildings going up there. So that will be a policy question as we get into that, of, you know, how do you, you know, incentivize developers to protect those existing buildings? You know, how do you kind of keep that fabric of Main Street while still, you know, showing and increasing the, the growth that, that people desire for that walkable space? So. So, you know, again, that's not something we look at in the scenarios, but that is a policy question we'll be bringing back to you, um, in twenty twenty four. Next slide. Um, so this one is, you know, center growth and neighborhood nodes. And you'll see, you know, we're still focusing on that central space, um, you know, the kind of, the auto oriented commercial core downtown, Main Street. But there are some differences with this one, and this is why you start to see more jobs, um, start to pop up on this compared to other areas. We really tried to focus on where are key locations along, you know, uh, collectors or arterials that might have opportunity for small scale locally serving commercial, where areas that you might be able to have a little bit more mixed use. But also, um, looking at corridors, so one hundred and seventy ninth, um, you know, the areas where there's, you know, kind of a medical, um, component. Are there locations that you could start to kind of build a little bit more, uh, a little bit more energy in, in that, in that area? And so those are areas that we identified as, you know, different types of mixed use, both employment and retail. And that's why you start to get that higher employment count in this one compared to the others, which is more just focused on the core with residential elsewhere.
I've got a question on this, and Councilmember Scarborough does as well. Does this alternative reduce, potentially reduce some of the pressure on the older structures that are like on Main Street? Because you're dispersing, uh, the density, uh, the growth in, in other areas of town and sort of decentralizing the growth with neighborhood nodes?
You know, it, it's hard to say. I think there'd be different types of products. So if you're really looking at a, say a four over one type of mixed use, which means retail on the, on the ground, and then four stories above that, you know, that probably would not be located on the periphery. If you really want to build that product, you'd probably look at more central area. If your, if your goal is to do more townhome with a corner retail shop, that's something that might be able to be located in a, in a variety of different places. So it probably depends on what the intent is of the developer and landowner for that, on what that would, what that would mean.
One of the things I like about this map that I'm looking at is that in some cases, it's taking advantage of the lesser developed, you know, lower developed areas. Like if I look at the north end of the map, the area that appears to be general commercial at the very tip top, um, that's not far from where I live, and that's an area that's underdeveloped. And I see less displacement of older structures, less displacement of, uh, people living there, and sort of an opportunity to use a cleaner slate, if you will, to build something new. Um, and I also think about the downtown and how you've got smaller lots, and it's harder to negotiate with multiple landowners to get enough lots together so that you can do one development. Um, so as I'm looking at this, that's one thing that I kind of like about this is having some larger lots where you can have redevelopment, where it's easier for a developer to pull together, here's one lot, maybe two, as opposed to five or six in the downtown.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's a great point. And, and I want to stress too, you can see slightly darker parcels within these areas. So like the big purple blob in the middle, that's not zoning or future land use. That's just like, that's, that's, it's an intent, like, let's make this more, a little bit more mixed use. And so those darker parcels in there are ones that have been identified in the multiple lands inventory. So when we paint, which is kind of a term we use for when you develop these scenarios, we're not painting every parcel within the city. We're really painting those, those vacant and redevelopable parcels for these land uses. So it only assumes developments, um, on those areas that have been identified as potential for that.
Thank you. The, the last thing that I like about this sort of approach where it's sort of decentralized and in terms of growth, having multiple nodes is, you know, I think about where I live, and if I want to go get like, uh, go get milk, I have to hop in the car and drive down Highway two where everybody else is going to get milk. And it's nice having like a opportunity for a smaller grocery store or something that's on, you know, my side of town so that I'm not getting in the traffic on Highway two. And instead I'm going a different direction to get supplies and things like that. It also creates a more walkable situation. For those of you living in the downtown, that's not an issue. You can walk to a business. For me to, you know, to go to a coffee shop in downtown, I don't know where that would be. Um, I have to, you know, hop in the car or plan on a thirty minute walk and then a thirty minute walk back. And my coffee will get cold by then, so I'll have to come back, which might be good for the coffee shop because I have to come back. But to be able to have multiple nodes allows me to have a convenience store or something closer to me, um, to go shopping. So that's, those are some things that I, I like about this and, um, I just thought I'd share those. Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah, and you may have answered half the question, but I, I look at one seventy ninth being all purple. Which with your explanation, that, that would tell me that you could go along there and talk. And on the, the left hand side of that, those are all probably new houses that you would have to go in and say, we want this house, this house, and this house, because we're going to build a grocery store for that end of town. And I, are, uh, are we going to vote on some of this somewhere along the lines, say, not there? Because, you know, some of this, I don't agree with whatsoever. I mean, I see a lot of it. I see your explanation, grocery store that end of town, or even at the other end of town or something, but again, when I see this purple mark along one seventy ninth, I see a lot of houses where people are going to have to say, wait a minute, this house is less than twenty years old and you want me to, you want to tear it down and his house and my house? So you can build something commercial in here? I'm not comfortable with that.
To, to pivot his question just a little bit on one, one seventy ninth, but look at one fifty fourth, one fifty fourth there. Those houses were built in the late nineties.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about one fifty four.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Those houses were built in the nineteen nineties, right? So has that been considered the age of the structure as, as part of this?
Yeah, so the one hundred fifty fourth was actually a request from this Community Advisory Committee to add more mixed use there. You'll see that there aren't actually parcels identified as redevelopable there. So we assumed in the scenarios that there isn't development occurring there, but it could be from a future land use standpoint, you could designate that as mixed use. Um, so to, to your point, I want to address, it's okay to disagree with what these scenarios are. That's why we put them out there. The, the goal for this is to be able to do more analysis to bring back to you, to be able to talk essentially about trade offs. So, you know, if we were to take these out to the community and people said, we really dislike certain elements of this, we have, be able to have the traffic study, we'd have the environmental work, we'd have those other elements to talk about what some of those, some of those issues might be, and then coming back to you on a regular basis to talk about that. So this is not your future land use map. This is just a way for us to start to think about future options. And then we get into the details and the, the negotiation of, you know, what do you have in there to make meet your targets? What's the, the true future land use map and the way those implementation policies that you need as a part of that?
Anything further, Councilmember Scarborough? Yep. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
So I was really interested in the incentivizing developers to leave historic homes intact. And I'm wondering if in your work with other communities, you have any examples of that type of thing?
Yeah, there are some, there are some, there's, there's different ways to do it. There are, there are overlays. There are ways to kind of think about what your policy would be within the comprehensive plan.
What, what's an overlay?
Sorry, that, sorry, I get into terminology too much. An overlay could be like, um, historic overlay, for example. So you could have a single family zone, a land, you know, a development zone. An overlay is sometimes put on older neighborhoods that actually starts to regulate development differently than if it were a new single family zone. So sometimes there's development requirements or design requirements because it's historic. Um, sometimes there's a unique feature with that, um, that, that you would have to address as a part of that overlay. Downtown's use that a lot as well, too. Um, if you want different types of streetscape, or you didn't want different types of building frontage. Um, there are trade offs with that though, because the more regulation you put on to, you know, onto the zone itself, um, sometimes can backfire with making it, you know, burdensome for development. So there's a balance with that. And I'm not suggesting either way, you know, what that would be. But I think there are ways we'd want to talk about and explore, um, if that's, if that's the direction council wanted to go when we get into that, that time for the process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Alex.
All right. So as I said, we met with the Community Advisory Committee, um, about a month, just over a month or so ago, we're actually meeting with them again on the fourth to start talking about some policy, um, work. Uh, but, you know, overall, we presented similar scenarios. The ones I just showed you have been updated, um, based on, um, C A C and Planning Commission meetings. But overall, I'm generally supportive of, of the scenarios as we showed them. Um, there were some, uh, questions about kind of equity, you know, and displacement, particularly in areas south of Highway two. If we're showing a lot of areas for potential change, you know, does that start to stress a community that is both more diverse but less affluent than, than areas north, um, of Highway two? So there were some questions around that, um, but also questions about why don't we have services up north? And so those were some of the spots that we added into those scenarios to try and, try and put some of that more community serving, um, commercial in there. We did look at an area, I kind of the far northeast corner, which is actually outside of city limits, but within the urban growth area. We had a purple blob on that, uh, map a while back, but after we looked at it, there's a lot of critical areas out there. The Advisory Committee felt that between the critical areas and kind of the limited growth potential, it probably didn't make sense to have that. So we kept that as low density residential, just because that's probably what could feasibly go in that area. About, um, really looking at that equitable distribution of growth, which is that centers and, and nodes concept under scenario two. Um, there are, we just, just talked about this, um, Councilor Kenny was reducing impacts of structures on Main Street. You know, are there specific types of either policy requirements or other things we should consider? Um, we're, we're going to flag that to keep that as a part of, you know, that policy conversation. Um, but also identify ways to reduce residential displacement. Um, there is, you know, the Department of Commerce, the Department of Commerce actually does displacement risk for cities. They've done it for all the regional cities for the comprehensive plans. Monroe is not identified as one that, you know, is potentially, you know, with a lot of displacement, but it's still a consideration. You know, we want to make sure that naturally occurring portable housing stays in the neighborhood, stays in the community. Um, you know, displacement just for more growth isn't necessarily the solution. So those were some of the considerations that both Planning Commission and the Advisory Committee had. I just want to share those with you, because that did inform, you know, how we developed those scenarios we just presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, Ben.
Yes. And one of the things you just said, what, what I hear is you said the advisory board said, it sounds to me like they want towns outside of town. And then with that, my question is, what about roads and the infrastructure we have that brings people to Highway two and into the old downtown? I want us to be careful of destroying the old town downtown.
Yeah.
Because we can get a Mill Creek, seven story McMinigans, whole block, and fulfill the, uh, the need for two hundred and some odd units, or two thousand some odd units by, uh, twenty forty four. And we're going to start and look like driving through Bothell. And I'm not going to be here that long, but my concern is, I don't want to look like that. I don't want to look like one hundred and ninety sixth in Linwood, where it looks like a bunch of shag buildings building. I mean, across the street from the Goodwill there, they're building that. They're tearing down the old Goodwill, the, uh, the, uh, Humane Society for Cats and everything else along there, so they can build another one of them, seven story or eight story four block buildings and probably to achieve what the county says you have to do. And I, I'm concerned about that in Monroe. I just, I don't, probably don't have, I'm only one in seven votes on that. And, and I just, I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned about it turning into that. I'm concerned about us turning into that.
You know, I would say supportive downtown is almost universal. You know, what we heard, um, online and person to the Advisory Committee, a vibrant and lively downtown is, is central to, you know, both, I think, the land use and the policy work around that. You know, it's, it, we, we ask where the center of ci- the city is, many people point to downtown. And, but they said, you know, but we need more housing or we need more jobs down there. And so that's the balance of how do you maintain what is in Monroe? But also acknowledging that, you know, you have those great Main Streets. The, the question about city outside of a city, I think the focus really on that node scenario is not looking at seven, eight, nine story buildings. It's really smaller scale structures, you know, townhomes, you know, small apartments, but that could, some things that could support small scale commercial. So partly you need rooftops to be able to support that.
Rooftops.
Rooftops, which are, you know, people living in, in buildings to be able to support some of those commercial uses. But we're, we're not proposing anything on a scale in those areas other than, you know, kind of really low, low density, um, apartment or townhome, those types of elements.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, just, uh, to, in response to what you said, Councilmember Scarborough, uh, we've, we've talked about it in the past that we don't want to end up like ninety nine and some of these other places that you mentioned. So, um, and that's why this is so important, so that we can get all the data and do all the studies and get all the, all the analysis that's needed so that we can make an informed decision months from now and not, you know, we're not deciding anything tonight. But, um, this is like the next step. So I, I think, uh, I'm, I'm in support of your concerns. You're not alone. Thank you.
One of the benefits, I think, with Monroe are kind of the, the good points is you already meet your housing targets without doing anything. So, so that's, it's really like, how do we provide that employment? And also that walkability and that, that kind of, um, space or place, um, that, that community's asking for. And so I think that's the kind of focus of the scenarios is yes, we do need to increase employment options within the city. Um, housing is not as big of an issue. Um, so how do you start to balance and mix, mix those? So you kind of get the best of both worlds. You get, get the walkability, you get the great public spaces, but you also are, you know, meeting your targets and, you know, providing unemployment opportunities as well. So that's, that's what those scenarios are, are trying to do.
Any other? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough. He, he doesn't need to yield. We, we don't yield here, to be clear. Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
I agree, and I appreciate that, but everybody promises, ah, we're not going there. Oh, and just don't worry about it. Scarborough, we ain't going there. Well, all of a sudden, the rules change at the county level or the state level that tells the county what to do, that tells us what to do. And all of a sudden, we're looking at something different, something more dense and more tall and more, not Monroe, not something that people move from Everett this way to get away from, and now they're moving to Sultan to get away from too much here. So, you know, it's, it's a slippery slope, in my opinion. I may be dead when it comes around, but it, I'm fearful that it, if you're not careful, it goes that direction.
Uh, so ju- just a, a couple of comments. Um, one, I, it is very likely that we will have higher density, taller houses and structures here in our community. It may not be in the next twenty five years. It may not be in the next fifty, but we will have higher density here. So I'm, I'm just, I, I'm just saying, our community is going to grow. And what, this is a thirty year plan, twenty year plan? Our community is going to grow. And you can have multifamily that looks great. I encourage you to go look at Woodinville, uh, take a look at their new town center area. They've got wonderful multifamily buildings there with retail down below. Um, my kids have a hard time figuring out where they're going to live because single family, you know, detached housing is so fricking expensive. I bought my house at two hundred thousand dollars in two thousand one. The Zillow today tells me it's like six twenty five or six thirty five. It just depends upon the month and which way the wind is blowing. That is not something that's affordable for a lot of people who might be making minimum wage or even above minimum wage in, in this area. We need more multifamily. We need more, um, uh, higher density. Uh, what you're seeing in other jurisdictions is, is what we're going to need, uh, so that we can make certain our kids can find places to live. Um, and I will restate that whatever you're seeing in Bothell or Linwood, um, that's, that's providing a need where people can find a place to, to, to live now. So, um, I would encourage you to go look at other places also because, uh, again, I don't know what you have in your mind, but there's other types of housing where you feel very comfortable going and visiting, and people are living above in condominiums. Hopefully, if state law changes to make it easier to make more condominiums, um, or apartments. And, uh, I, for one, I, my wife and I lived in apartments up until I was, uh, maybe twenty five or twenty six, um, including when we had two kids. That's all we could afford. And that's all we could afford. And I would be bothered if a community didn't allow. The developers that built those apartments to build those apartments. And then where wouldn't my wife and I have lived when we couldn't afford anything back then? Because we certainly couldn't afford to buy a house. So as we're talking about this, I just encourage everybody to think beyond maybe the type of housing you're thinking of. But to think, you know, to go visit other communities, see what they have. They may be townhouses. They may be other forms of attached product. They may be things like in Woodenville where you've got. Wineries and restaurants below and three or four stories up above of housing units. Um my big complaint is we need more condominiums so that people can have homeownership, so that they're not just paying. Somebody else money rather than getting, rather than getting money that they can sell that. And move up if they want to into a detached housing product, if that's what they want. And really, that is one of the huge problems we have today. I mean, my wife and I, we bought a house in Olympia. We flipped it, made some money off of it. That became a down payment ultimately where we live today. If we ever decide to move, I know that I've got a down payment for the next structure. And when you don't have that housing to take you. Hopefully into an apartment. And then maybe into a condo so that then you can move into something else that's larger as your family needs change. We're, we're doing a disservice to our kids and to our grandkids. So again, I would encourage you to, to think about that. And then as far as like redevelopment, you know, it doesn't have to be in the downtown. I mean, if you think long term, a lot of these higher density residential in Woodenville would be different. They occur along arterial, so it may not be Main Street. It might be highway two. You know, there, there might be other ways that redevelopment occurs in that fifty year timeframe that is, is better situated for mass transit and services. And then lastly, I go back to the whole thing that if we've got lots. That are um within our city limits. So these aren't cities outside cities. They are, they are neighborhood nodes within a city. Um it, wouldn't it be great to have, hey, I've got three acres right here? Great, we'd like you to go ahead and try to develop it at a higher density with condominiums or townhomes. So that we're not displacing something in the downtown and taking out historic structures or ruining that, that downtown core. So these are things I'm, I'm going to encourage the council just to kind of think through, okay? These are all value judgments. Is it right? Is it wrong? That's why you're elected as council members, but I, I do want to encourage you to, to kind of think those things through. Um they may not be things you need to deal with so much in this, in this next twenty years. But your predecessors or maybe a couple of you, if you're still around uh in the next ten. Um you're going to want to be looking at those things and, and, and I'd encourage you to go look at other areas. So. Anything further, Alex?
I think that's it.
All right. Um so you need two motions, right?
I do. So, so again, I just want to stress, this is not selecting the draft future land use map. This is allowing us to do additional analysis and get into the supplemental environmental impact statement work. Um that allows us to do transportation analysis, critical areas, capital facilities, including utilities. Um it gets us into the meat of, of the process and, and then along with that, you know, starting to think about the next phase of public engagement. So those are really the two things that we would love agreement on to be able to move forward.
Okay, um council, I turn to you to see if anybody's interested in making a, a motion uh to move item one. Councilmember Kenny.
I'll make the motion, but I want to make sure I understand what I'm doing. Um I'm basically, we are basically approving your data. Or allowing you to go forward with what you have.
Yes, so and to create more. So this, this, the approval would allow us to enter into the supplemental environmental impact statement process. That's where we go into specific analysis for transportation. More depth and how, housing, land use, critical areas, kind of all those things that the state requires you to do. Um that is what we need to do to move this forward uh so that we can actually, you know, kind of meet our, meet our schedule.
Okay, I am comfortable with that. All right, here it goes. I moved to approve proposed land use scenarios for analysis, analysis in the supplemental environmental impact statement review. No action and action alternatives with the understanding that the alternatives do not constitute the draft future land use map.
We have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Hanford for uh motion number one under uh. Under discussion item ten point one. Uh any discussion on the motion? All right, saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Councilmember Kenny, did you still want to?
Sure. I moved to authorize the community development department, along with the consultant team, to prepare and facilitate public outreach events. To gain comment on the proposed land use scenarios.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, uh second from Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. All right. Did you have anything further, Alex?
Just talking about next step. So thank you for that. Now we will move into the um SEIS process. That's the supplemental environmental impact statement. We'll be working on that in the winter and uh early spring. Uh so that's, that's the next piece of a major work. Uh that will include the, the public engagement process, which will probably start in March, April timeframe, where we need to start sorting that out. We are working on the draft policy framework now. So that's the next piece of this is where you actually get into your existing policy. Um update it, um remove ones that are already done or you know, no longer apply and then start to add new ones uh. That relates to the, the future comprehensive plan. So a lot more to come in front of you right now. Uh but we have two tracks. We have SEIS and then we have the policy framework. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you very much. All right, council members, um. Our. This must be always up here and I just miss it. So our next meeting will be December fifth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. Uh there's no further business this evening, so unless there's objection, we are adjourned. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.